I'd like to call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here, and I see Councilmember Jennings.
Councilmember Jennings.
The one who's late.
And I do expect Councilmember Guerra and Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, Madam Clerk, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you mind leading us?
Thank you. Where do we stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
We have no special presentations.
We have no special presentations. Consent calendar, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, I have two speakers on item number five, and I do need to read into the record for council item number five, the ordinance amending various sections of chapter 5.8 to the city code relating to food vending machines. And that should read, it should read section 5.68.020 is what currently states in the report, and that citation should be 5.68.025. And then I do have two speakers on item number five.
Go for it.
The first one is Gina Anderson and then Patrice Clemens. Ms. Anderson.
Anderson and Ms. Clemens, thank you for being here. Why don't you both come up if you're going to speak? Yep, thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Gina Anderson, and I'm the Executive Director of Sowing Solidarity, an urban farm nonprofit in a school field of Hollywood Park, in the Hollywood Park neighborhood. And tonight I'm asking to be included in the food vending ordinance, refrigerated trailer with an adjacent table, so that, for example, this weekend in Southland Park, I'm a resident of Southland Park, there's a food truck community event, that that trailer in future years could be alongside the food trucks at these community events, so that I can sell this hyper-local seasonal food, but also promote the mission of Sowing Solidarity. We have an expandable mission that is not just beholden to the school that I'm at in Hollywood Park, but it's a mission I want to bring all throughout Sacramento. There's a changing face to farmers' markets. There's something innovative and exciting about making it mobile, and that's what I'm asking to do. So again, a refrigerated food truck and modifying it, that's my request, to include the table so that I can sell my produce in that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Patrice Clemens.
Hi, my name's Patrice Clemens, and I'm a resident of Sacramento, and I'm here in support of the modification that Ms. Anderson just spoke of. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody signed up to speak, but I would just like to let the two commenters know that generally to a man in ordinance, we would have to have presented the language in writing and do a bunch of things, but we're continuing to evolve this ordinance. So if you don't mind sending me some written comment, this is something I brought forward based on comments like yours from others, that I'd love to work on that with you. Okay? Yep. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? We have a motion from Councilmember Carr, a second from Councilmember Harris, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries, consent calendar passes. Great. Next item, Madam Clerk, I believe, is the city auditor report.
Item number 11 is the city auditor's 2018 citizen survey.
Welcome, Mr. City Auditor.
Thank you.
And co.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jorge Seguera, your city auditor. With me tonight is Farishta Arari, who was primarily responsible for completing this project. The 2018 City of Sacramento Citizen Survey is a product from our newly-formed Independent Budget Analyst Division of the city auditor's office and is presented as a receive and file. In February 2018, the office of the city auditor contracted with the National Research Center to participate in the city's first national citizen survey. The National Citizen Survey is a benchmarking community survey that provides a comprehensive and accurate picture of community quality and resident perspectives about local government services, policies, and management. This report may be used by city management to identify areas in which respondents see strong performance and where performance offers opportunities for improvement. It may also be used to prioritize the community issues and services respondents feel need the most improvement. Repeating this survey annually will allow the city to identify trends and gauge whether policy changes and priorities are improving residents' quality of life and their opinions regarding the various issues and city services. The National Research Center mailed out 3,000 surveys to a random sample of residents between the month of March and May of 2018. The map on the right identifies the areas in the city where the 3,000 surveys were mailed. We received a good response from our survey, where a total of 502 were received. This level of response resulted in a margin of error for all responses of plus or minus 4 percent. Knowing that there would be interest in getting results for more targeted areas of the city, I also ask that the information be provided by council district. However, as expected, as a number of respondents decreases, the margin of error for subgroups increased significantly. For subgroups of approximately 250 respondents, the margin of error is plus or minus 6 percent, while smaller groups of approximately 100 residents have a margin of error of plus or minus 10 percent. It should be noted that the number of respondents for most of the districts are less than 100. Therefore, the margin of error by council district may be significantly more than 10 percentage points. The survey was also made available to residents on the city's website for four weeks, where a total of 95 respondents were received. The online survey responses were reported separately, as they were not a representative sample of city residents. The National Citizen Survey report is about the livability of Sacramento and captures respondents' opinions regarding the overall quality of life in Sacramento and a range of community issues and services provided by the city. The issues are then categorized within the three pillars of the community: community characteristics, governance, and participation, and across eight central facets, including safety, mobility, natural environment, build environment, economy, recreational wellness, education, enrichment, and community engagement.
Mr. City Auditor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We got out of closed session late, but the planning commission starts in here at 6:00. So we are supposed to finish our meeting at quarter till in order to turn over the chamber. So to the extent that we could abbreviate the presentation a little bit would be helpful. We have 15 members of the public to speak and comments not on the agenda that we'd like to be able to get to.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm just the messenger.
I'm used to it. It always happens to me. All right, so I'm going to go off of my notes then. All right. So just briefly on this slide, the way that we read it is, there is a line on this graph that represents all 502 respondents. That gives us the highest level of accuracy. And so each point represents how the respondents felt about that particular area of interest. So for example, Sacramento has a place to live. We have approximately 75 percent of the overall respondents that felt that it was a good place to live. When you look at the two arrows above it, or the arrows above it, a sideways error indicates that it's similar to the national benchmark, which includes over 500 communities across the entire United States. When you look at the individual bar graphs, those are the combined results for the council districts that are noted. So for example, the green bar are council districts one and four, the gray bar is two and three. And so this can be used to look at how the individual areas that we're noting in these combined districts compare to the overall results, and also how the overall results compare to our national benchmark. We did a similar exercise for community characteristics. This one shows some different areas. One of the ones that stands out to us is the overall feeling of safety in Sacramento, where we performed much lower than our national benchmark. So what does "much lower" mean? It's not defined in the actual documents that I provided you, but the way that these benchmarks work is if you are designated as similar, which would be the sideways arrows, that's indicating that you are within 10 percentage points of the national average. If you are lower or higher, then you are between 10 and 20 percentage points from the national average. And if you are two arrows up or down, you are either much higher or much lower than the national average, which means you exceeded 20 percentage points from the national average. And so that's how you would basically read that. This graph gives you a sense of different community characteristics, like shopping opportunities and whatnot. If the line is skewed to the right, then it means that most of the respondents were more positive about it, meaning that they rated it as good or excellent. If you're skewed more to the left, then that means that most of the respondents felt that it was either fair or poor. So just quickly looking at the top of the list, you have shopping opportunities rating the highest. At the bottom of the list, you have the availability of affordable, quality housing rating the lowest. When you look at the arrows beside it, it tells you, how does that compare then to the national average? And so with the top-rated opportunity, that one's similar. With the bottom one, you're lower than the national average. We did the same thing regarding the quality of the services that the city provides. So if you look at fire services, for example, that rated the highest. Similar logic in how the information is laid out. It's very similar to the national benchmark. When you look at the bottom, you see some of the ones that rated lower, like for example, street repair, where we were much lower than our national benchmark. We also did some questions on special topics. The special topics that were identified for this particular exercise were homelessness and youth parks and community enrichment. We've listed how those were rated by the respondents, weighted more towards the positive side, which means essential or very important. And so the one that rated the highest regarding homelessness was providing access to health care, behavioral health, and substance abuse, followed by creating affordable permanent housing. When you're looking at expanding youth programs, what rated the highest was after-school programs and youth employment opportunities. Community priorities over the next two years, this was something else that was inquired about. The top two areas that rated the highest in terms of priorities for the community in the next two years is the overall feeling of safety in the city of Sacramento, followed by overall economic health of the city of Sacramento. That concludes my presentation. We'd like to thank the city manager's office for their help in executing this program. They helped fund this and helped us in designing some of the special questions. I'd like to thank the council members that also provided some input regarding this, and obviously those members of our community that provided their valuable opinions to actually formulate this information.
And I apologize, I had bad information. The planning commission meeting that's being, is next week. Because we move council next week, so.
Mine was May.
But thank you for abbreviating your presentation, Mr. City Auditor. We have two members of the public who wish to speak on this, and then we'll go to council comments. Madam Clerk, great job.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland and then Mac Worthy.
Mr. Copeland? I don't see Mr. Copeland. Mac Worthy? Oh, there you are. Sorry. Sorry. I did not see you, I'm sorry.
Why wouldn't this survey out to more people in Sacramento? And where can we get it now? This doesn't make sense. You're limiting the people's information to know things about their own city. This should be disgraceful, which the city council or whoever put this out. This is disgraceful.
Our next speaker is Mac Worthy.
When you talk about audit, this is a disgrace. We want audits for jobs. People can clap when they get ready, Mayor. People can clap when they get ready, when they hear the truth. We have a situation here, it's a potential of surrogation by demoting people by their jobs with your house. This is all about your house and things. This is what brings us, I'm a Republican. We gonna cut this garbage. We gonna cut this garbage. Health care, you can't cut. What do you do in health care? You don't do any no health care, man? But yesterday you gonna come here and talk about an audit? We got it so that we can't find how many people of color here, because how you hide by others. And African-Americans, you cannot be an African-American unless you got an African daddy. And I know you lying. You lying. You are misleading young black kids to say they demonstrating against us. You not. Give them jobs. Create some jobs instead of creating some drugs to get them loaded and lose another generation. That should be your audit. How many have we lost here? In those areas that you pretend that you bought out? When you bought them off the banks and tore them down and told the people you gonna redevelop? What was the jobs on your survey to put back to those people that you took their property and lied about? You know you took their property. You hadn't made no job for them, but you want a survey on where they live and who is there and how much money they make? It's all over, people, wake up, because it's coming. It's coming. It's on its way. John Cox come in as governor, we going to attack this city.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, your time is coming.
By lying to these young folks.
That, council comments. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Farishta and Jorge, I'd just like to say that I find this data immensely valuable. So when it says receive and file, I'm not going to be filing it. It's going to be sitting on my desk, and this thing's going to be thought through a lot. There is really valuable information here that we can use, I think, in representing our districts well and giving us ideas on how to move the council forward on numerous issues. So I love the effort, and I think that we should fund this annually, because it's a really great piece of work. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Jorge, I too find this most valuable. And it's one of the things that we've been looking for. If we are in the business of providing customers service, then we have to be concerned about customer satisfaction. And this gives us an overview of how the people that we serve, how do they feel about the service that they're receiving? So it's, this is a one-year snapshot, though. So what I want to make sure is every year in your work plan, you have this item, so that we can review it every year and over time, see how we're doing. Plus, it will also serve to give the council priorities and where we want to put resources to improve in an area. To be a good city, to be a great city, you have to do everything really well, and a few things you have to be great at. And this gives the council an opportunity to decide, what things do we want to be really great at, by being good while being good in every other area? And so this will help us in that discussion, and certainly help us in the policy development. So thanks for providing it.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I too thought this was great. Thank you. Thanks for taking my calls on this one. I had lots of questions, and you did a great job. I briefly will say that I found this to be incredibly useful. I just would love to see it larger. So I know one of your recommendations was to target 5,000 instead of 3,000. I think that's critically important next time that we do it, because the margins of error were too small for us, I think, to really rely on it too much. And yet I think it's critically useful information in terms of serving our districts. And then also, next time we go around, I would love to talk to you on the front end about the groupings prior to, because I know District 1 and District 4 were grouped, and when I asked you why, it said geographically. But I think people would probably group 1 and 3 geographically, more than they would 1 and 4. And I thought that the pairings were a little bit odd. You know, I mean, Land Park and downtown versus South Natomas, North Natomas seems like more the same.
Well, and we struggled with how to exactly, you know, divvy it up, because there isn't really an exact logic behind it. But one of the things that we weighed, in addition to just its proximity, is that in anticipating having to group them, we wanted, when we did the groupings, to be able to reach as close to 100 or more as possible. And so depending on which ones we ended up grouping, we wouldn't have necessarily hit that. And this got us pretty close to the 100 for every district. So that's what we were targeting. I'm hoping like what you said, though, if we expand the number of surveys that we issue, our respondents per district will increase, and then we can group it in whichever way you like.
Yeah, or just keep them as single districts, because that would be a lot easier. But yeah, so I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it solves itself if we get more participation.
Absolutely.
I also think, speak for myself, but I particularly think I could be helpful in getting people to respond if I knew when it was going out. I knew we were doing it, but I didn't know the timeframe that it was landing for folks, and we probably could have done a better job of a campaign to get people to return the.
I think you're absolutely right. And given that this was our first time doing it, I think there's a lot of lessons to be learned from the process. We definitely didn't have a perfect process.
Yeah.
I think we could do a much better job of marketing it, and that definitely includes getting the help of our council members in getting the word out, that this is something important for our citizens to do and fill out, and hopefully that will improve our response rate even further.
Bottom line, it's really worth it, so we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angela.
Mr. Mayor. Very good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Jorge, before you go, I think Councilmember Ashby's point is really good. You could use community plan area. I noticed that District 4 had an inordinate amount of respondees at 119, almost double any other district. And I think that speaks to the survey methodology, that if it's, we wait for people to respond to something versus seeking them out, it's not going to be as viable a response rate. You know, either we get the people who are super satisfied, or we get the people who are super unsatisfied. And I don't know what that tells us about the people who don't respond. So I would think maybe we could look at a polling option or something. Sac State is doing some interesting work with community survey with Valley Vision, so I'd suggest maybe we think about those options as well, to really understand what people are thinking and feeling about these various aspects of the city.
I was just agree with that and sort of follow up on that. And we talked about that. I think this is terrific, and maybe it's because we're politicians, but I think we need a clear understanding of how this differs from a political public opinion poll. I understand that there is some, you know, potential, what do you call it, margin of errors, et cetera, but you're respectfully a great auditor, not a pollster. And so what is the difference? It's just important in terms of how we might look at this. Is this a sort of a more general snapshot? Is it intending to be precise in terms of what people's exact priorities are? It's putting this sort of tool, which seems very useful, into context, and especially compared and contrasted with a poll, would be at least helpful to me, and I think to, this is the capital city, right? And the many people watching on television this afternoon who might have the same question.
Well, and one of the things, in anticipation of this being kind of a learning experience, given that it was our first shot at doing a national citizen survey, we also included in our initial contract a training session, where the representatives from the National Research Center will be coming to Sacramento to give us kind of an overview of what they learned and answer any questions that we may have. If there's any interest by a council member or by council member staff that want to participate in that meeting, I would be happy to include those individuals in that meeting, so that those kind of questions can be answered, and we can have an even better survey the next time around.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we need a vote to accept this, or?
Receive and file.
It's a receive and file. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Seguera. All right, that concludes, does it not, Madam Clerk, the formal agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Okay, we now have public testimony for items not on the agenda.
Yes, we do. I have 18 people signed up for public comment for matters not on the agenda. Just remind folks that this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website or later from the archive files. Members of the public who wish to, the council should have completed a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Once the item starts, we cannot accept any more speaker slips. And so that everyone does have the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. The copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of your speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available from the clerk. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. Parking validations are also available from the clerk at the front of the room. So my first speaker is Robert Copeland, then Wanda Cleveland, then Joyce Johnston. Copeland?
I was highly upset at last week's meeting, because one of the council members let somebody go over two minutes and had a dialogue with them. That is both against the rules of your own city council. That should not have happened. Two minutes is two minutes. Doesn't matter if it's on my side or one of your donors. I think the person was from the California Department Association. Two, I was going to speak on the matter of public safety, like, how come we have so many wrecks in midtown or near wrecks in midtown? I'd like to see that lowered, whether it's bicycle, pedestrian, car, car, pedestrian, car. I'd like to see that lowered. Three, some of the Sacramento tenants in which I belong to is having organized an apartment complex over in Oak Park to keep a frail, frail black American citizen from being evicted. And we're going to do this all over the city if we can. We have had it with the Mayor Steinberg and city councils, supposed quasi-rank control that came up with last week. I've had it with this. We're going to get real rent control. We're going to help assist the tenants in Sacramento. And I don't care what the city council thinks, because they don't listen to the public until we put a ballot measure on, then they want to talk about housing and rent control. You should have done this before Mayor Steinberg became mayor, like when Kate J. was mayor. Maybe when Adam Rudin was mayor. That's what I'm going back. You have failed your duty. You have not made the city of Sacramento better. And I don't think we are mediocre city right now.
I miss that.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Our next speaker is Wanda Cleveland, Joyce Johnston, and then Lynette Davies.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor and council. As I sit here, I realize the council's made up of mostly white people. You guys are making rules, making rules for all of us. And I'm wondering if any of these Afro-American men or councilmen have anything to do with making these laws, because I'm understanding that with, a few days back, there was a white guy that was chased by cops and got to live through it. And before that happened, was a black guy that was mentally retarded that was killed. You want to know why everybody's upset? Why don't you stop killing their babies? These people all deserve to live. There isn't one person that isn't out there in society that doesn't have rights. If it is running them down, killing them, not letting them get justice, us as white privilege, we're able to have justice. Well, as I see this continuing, the black community and the brown community don't have that option, because your police department are killing them. No matter if they're running or whatever happens, that gentleman only had a BB gun. I see that not being very. I see that not being very hurtful. So you guys need to put these guys in their position and make more accountability and transparency. It's just like what's happening in Texas. The truth comes out after a while. The lady, officer that killed the black guy...
Our next speaker is Joyce Johnston, then Lynette Davies, and Donald Davies.
Thank you, Wanda.
So the city still needs housing, and I'm still here trying to build a unit of housing. I'm encouraged that now, after six months of discussing this, the city planning offices, they would now like to maybe incentivize people to build more secondary dwelling units like the one that would be finished now if they had issued a permit in February when I asked for it. But the problem with that is even though they plan to stop doing that at some point, they intend to keep on denying permits, requiring people to pay thousands of dollars for a hearing that they're not allowed to require under state law. While they aim to propose changing the practice and then presumably some period of time to actually enact the change in practice, and then city planning will have to get up to speed, and then maybe a year from now I can submit a new application, and within four months they might approve a permit. But I spent a year planning this project, including four long consultations with the city planning public counter. Not until I had refinanced my house to pay for it, emptied my garage for demolition, hired a contractor, and sent the contractor to get a permit, did city planning say, oh, no, no, we have this unwritten rule that you can only build over your existing garage, not, you can't build a garage and an apartment over it at the same time. It doesn't say that anywhere in the city or state rules. But the city now wants to say it's going to take them a year to change this. The problem is, I'm losing money at the rate of $2,000 a month now while I wait, paying mortgage interest, paying storage costs for garage contents, and frankly, losing rent at this point. It doesn't seem reasonable to wait another many months or a year, especially given that not a single word of the current regulation needs to change to process this. It doesn't say it can only be built over an existing garage. It says constructed over a garage, period. It's the city's unwritten interpretation that's the problem here.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. This is Johnston. Our next speaker is Lynette Davies, then Donald Davies, then James J. Jackson Jr.
Hello, I'm Lynette Davies with Canuck here. And I'm here to speak on what happens when you work directly with the city auditors trying to bring transparency and some justice in here. As a matter of fact, I can reasonably say that I worked with the cannabis, one of the reasons that we have a cannabis policy enforcement is because of the actions I've taken, being one of, bringing a claim against the city back in August, September 2nd of 2016, after I had exhausted every single avenue of working with the city staff, council members, and I took a bucket load of information to the city deauditors department and dropped it over there. Was given full whistleblower protection for bringing out some transparency in the city of Sacramento. Which brings me to February of this year, I filed for a new conditional use permit. In March, I spoke with the city about which address to use on my permit because my new yearly permit was going to be coming up. I followed the city of Sacramento's staff direction, used the old address, filed a new relocation papers for another $1,000, and was filed, and at that point, I was, followed all of their procedures. Not at any time, not at any time did they say, don't move. Not once. After I completely moved my store, I received an email dated May 3rd, which I would like to put up here. And on May 3rd, I was, I'm aware that dispensaries were previously allowed to operate while waiting for their CUP. However, however, I reviewed, where they no longer are allowed, I reviewed the meeting, had my attorneys review it, and we found that there's nothing in the ordinance that states that, just like this letter. Nothing in the ordinance that states this. As a matter of fact, the meeting actually stated that any illegal operator was given the opportunity to operate in the city of Sacramento while they were getting their CUP. How can that be?
Thank you, Ms. Davies. Your time is complete.
I'm closed because I'm too legal?
Thank you, Ms. Davies. The next speaker is Donald Davies, then James J. Jackson.
How can that be? I am closed because I am too legal. I am not afforded the same equal treatment under the same ordinance, and the city is allowed to selectively pick out who may and may not operate while getting their CUP. Of course, I challenged that and was told to close or be arrested. Nice. So I closed. I was told by city staff it would be a minimum 30 days, could be a max of 90 days if we were unlucky. It has been over 120 days, which is why I'm here. This is part of our ordinance, which allows a dispensary location to be reviewed by the planning commission if you are within 600 feet of each other. I filed for that review. I'm being held up because the police captain is worried about overconcentration as there is one dispensary next to us. We only have moved three miles from our old location. Both my council members, office and planning department staff have asked for anything that has any data to conclude what or why she has come up with that decision and have been ignored. Not only that, I was just informed Monday that if I am unwilling to change my business to a non-storefront, the cap, if I'm willing to change my business to a non-storefront delivery service, the captain will sign off in support. There are several non-storefronts, many on the same street and area, but that, for some reason, is not overconcentration. But my one of only 30 storefronts, which is much more valuable permit, is suddenly overconcentration. We have written community support, and the police pop viewed our store and was impressed by the level of security. None of this was taken into consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James J. Jackson, then T. Whitney, then Sonia Lewis.
My name is James J. Jackson Jr. I am a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, and I just want to keep this short to give as many people who are here a chance to say what I can only put into, I can only say so much about this issue that, stop killing black people, okay? It's really as simple as that. It's really that simple, okay? Black lives matter. The community is coming here constantly telling you that black lives matter, asking you to stop killing them, and yet, you're killing them. It's not rocket science. It's not that hard. Get your shit together. And if you care more about decorum than you care about people saying, stop killing black people, you are a terrible person.
Next speaker is T. Whitney. T. Whitney is the next speaker, then Sonia Lewis, then McWorthy.
I'm here because SACPD has killed yet another black youth in our community. It's not the only reason I come and speak before you guys, but Darrell Richards was only 19 years old. And there's no reason that you can give that can justify his death, especially when there's reports that SWAT were the people that engaged him. SWAT, I mean, we've all learned that what are they specialized in? Sharp shooting and de-escalation of hostage situations. Had you ever looked through a SWAT or through a rifle with a great scope on it? They would have been able to count the eyebrows or the hairs in his eyebrows if they were looking through the scope that I've looked through. It should have been more than apparent whether he actually really had a weapon or not, which I'm not convinced that that's even a factor has been established, because I don't believe the police narrative. Also, if he did have a pellet gun, it should have been evident to the SWAT team that engaged There is absolutely no reason why someone hunkered and hunched down under a stairwell should be gunned down by law enforcement. It's, you don't like the word murder, but that's what it is. It's cold-blooded murder. It's the killing of our citizens, and it should create outrage and heartbreak in each and every one of you, and you should be actively pursuing the abolition of our police department. And at the very least, instead of having the blind allegiance that you have to them, having some very deep, critical oversight of them from the community, not the cops.
Whitney, your time is complete. And next speaker is Sonia Lewis. Speaker? The next speaker is Sonia Lewis, then McWorthy, then Trina Allen.
It seems like nothing's changed. It was 2001 when my brother-in-law, Vernon Verrill, had to bury his brother, Donald Verrill, and was shot by Sacramento Police Department with a cellphone in his hand. A million dollars was paid out to his family. We're talking about 17 years later, you have Stephon Clark. Two months after that, three months after that, you have Brandon Smith. And now we are currently looking at the death of another mentally challenged, mental crisis, mental health issue here in Sacramento that is being ignored by the Sacramento Police I would imagine that the people in the Curtis Park area felt as if their neighborhood was taken over and seized by terrorists, a militia, the military, the night when Darrell was murdered. It should not have taken four hours, four hours from the time that a call came in at 11:32 to a neighbor, the person whose yard Darrell was murdered in at 3:40 a.m., to say, they just killed someone in my backyard. The city is hiding the truth. This police department is creating false narratives in regards to what our citizens are doing. A pellet gun, a mask, and SWAT. You tell me who has the advantage. Grown-ass men trained with weapons galore against a 19-year-old, probably less than 150-pound boy with a pellet gun. Shame on you for being scared of him. We should be scared of you.
That was another dog and pony show of the night. But first of all, I filled out two speaker slips for consent calendar. That's a violation of the Constitution. That wasn't her fault. It was up there. City council, that's a violation of the Constitution, not allowing a person to speak when they fill out their lease. But anyway, people, that's where you are. I done passed that. I'm 77 years old. I done passed that. I know garbage when I see it. Then we see that the young boy get killed off Broadway. Said, right there, and we told you. $900,000. The chief said it right. Yes, we are trained. That's politics. You know damn well you could not train no police to identify Milly Lewis. That was a distributor money for nonsense. And you said, right here. That's not the police, that's not the police's problem. That's their problem.
Yes.
Stick with me. We'll get them there. We'll get them in the court. This here is teaching prejudice. That's all this is. It's teaching prejudice. You see there? NAACP don't call the shots. We know on that consent calendar to SHRA. We uncovered some stuff here. There's some cover-ups of Edgewood Construction. This city is involved.
Yeah.
I called the shots for Ms. Price for what gonna happen on that case. Black mode, I called Pam. We gonna subpoena you two. You know about it. That woman living in a doghouse trying to make it. And you know what's going on here, but you sit here and allow these people, why would SHRA give the NWA severe grant? Because we allowed Betty Williams to sit at the table with us out there. She will not know more because she is a liar. NAACP is critical, people. Now is the time to sue them along with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Your time's complete.
Work with me, and we'll get them to court.
Our next speaker is Trina Allen, then Eileen Schnitinger, and then LB Pixel.
Your police force killed a teenager experiencing mental health issues, and based on previous example, you won't do anything about it but cape for their bad behavior and disparage your public for our outrage. As an abolitionist, I am more interested in ending a system created to repress and enslave its people than intend to individual bad apples. However, I do recognize the harm reduction of getting particularly violent officers off the street and out of poor neighborhoods of color. Your SWAT team in whole functioned as an anti-black militia. In regards to individual officers, here are your receipts. Fong should have been fired. You know that. He illegally detained Dejean and created a mental health crisis that shouldn't have existed. He also lied on the stand and cost your taxpayers a quarter of a million dollars. Figaro should have been fired. He viciously beat Nondi Kane, and again, we paid for his crimes. Robinette and Mercadell executed a father in his own backyard for holding a phone while being black. Your officers refused medical attention for Brandon Smith, and as he cried out for help, he died in your care. I could go on and on, and you do nothing. You do nothing to censure either your department or its individual officers. Teenagers dying while running away with maybe pellet guns, being hunted by a team of grown men trained in militarized combat, armed with high-tech weaponry, padded with bulletproof armor, and given access to unlimited resources cannot be an accepted status quo. When your officer stopped pursuit, he hid. He never shot his gun. A child crouching in fear does not warrant lethal force. There has not been a single on-death duty of a SACPD officer in 20 years, and you so fear for your lives, you kill black and brown people every few months. Your department claims that less lethal force cannot be used when the suspect is armed. He was a child with a toy gun. They were unlimited resources. They said he had to kill him. He had to die. Had he been a white teenage girl, he most assertively would have been alive. And when you lament the tragedy of Darrell's loss while simultaneously reassuring the public...
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Eileen Schnitinger, LB Pixel. Ms. Allen, your time is complete. Please sit down.
Your two minutes are up, please, Trina. Thank you. Thank you, Trina. Thank you.
Eileen Schnitinger.
Is Pixel was next, I thought.
No, Eileen's next. And then Ms. Pixel, and then Carly Brandon.
Shout out, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. All right, sir?
Hi, my name's Eileen Schnitger, and I've lived in Sacramento for 12 years. I'm in District 3. I voted for you in your first term, Jeff Harris, but not this last one. I'm sick. I am sick. And I would think, before you guys go to bed at night, that, you know, instead of rejoicing over the new jail, I mean, the new judges' chambers or making this an art city, yeah, can you listen to the, we're in crisis over the racist police department, not only killing our black citizens, but, you know, killing our mentally ill people of color. So, yeah, talk about white privilege. My mentally ill brother, who was psychotic four times, four different times, picked up by police four different times, he got taken to mental health services every single time.
Why is that?
Why is that? Why is that? So I just, you know, I came when Stephon Clark was killed, and I have come to really learn and respect the leadership of Black Lives Matter. And when I look and say, what is the city council gonna do in crisis? When are we gonna stop? When are we gonna take our week and take our night, get the best minds in the country, from community leaders to law enforcement leaders, mayors, and say, get over here, we need to get together immediately, put our money into that, and figure out how can we overcome the police union, the protocols, the training, the business as usual, and show some leadership? So I just want to say that... So, I just want to say that it's a gift, that people come to share their opinions. It is a gift to you. You have nothing better than people coming to share what's on their mind.
Time is complete, ma'am. Thank you.
And I say, act like it. Act like it.[660.87][660.87](APPLAUSE).
Next speaker is LB Pixel, then Carly Brannon, then Stevante Clark.
So I will need to take more than two minutes to speak in honor of the mother, in honor of the mother and the relatives of Daryl Richards. I have stood here many times, feeling the strain in my heart as countless mothers who have stood before you begging for change in policing strategies. I continue to cry with the mothers, the grandmothers, the aunties, the families of those killed at the hands of the police. Let's be clear. I am not here to appeal to your moral conscience or beg justice from you people. You people! We have, we will have our justice, be it poetic or divine. I don't care about your laws, because what have been done may have been within the guidelines of police training, but it should be morally objectionable by the people to kill as a policy when confronting any perceived fear due to conscious or unconscious biases. It would appear that the police is trained to be judge, jury, and executioner, following the orders to kill and inflict torture. But enough about the ones who murder. I want to speak to the mothers who weep for their sons, to the grandmothers, the sisters, aunties, or loved ones. Each day that the sun rises, they will remember that their son will rise in power. Their deaths have taken place, but their lives are much more than a moment taken. The mistakes, the recklessness that young people often careen towards, excusable mistakes if they are not of color.
Ms. Pixel, your time is complete. My next speaker is Carly Brannon. Ms. Pixel, your time is complete.
Ms... Okay. Ms. Pixel.
You have exceeded your speaking time.
Please stop speaking and take your seat, ma'am.
Ma'am, you have exceeded your speaking time.
Please stop speaking and take your seat. No. By continuing to speak, you are disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. You are now in violation of Chapter 5A1 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you do not stop, I will order you to leave the meeting. Do you understand the warning, Ms. Pixel? No. No. Ms. Pixel?
Then who have yet to become doctors, lawyers, teachers, construction workers?
You have now been given a fair warning and have elected to disrupt the meeting.
To become fathers' brothers' wives?
I now order you to leave the meeting.
Deaths are now dead, to be buried.
Sergeant-at-Arms.
In the shame of your cowardly hearts! Fuck you!
You either die, and you don't care. You're dying. You deserve to get there, and you're paying for it.
Okay, who is next, please? Who is next? Who is next?
I'm ashamed.
My next speaker is us.
Sit down, ma'am, or else I'll ask you to leave the chamber. Please. Ma'am, please sit down. Please sit down. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carly Brannon, then Stevante Clark, and then Eva Nadal.
Ms. Brannon.
We're gonna start with the definition of Gestapo from the Merriam-Webster Dictionary. "A secret police organization employing an underhanded and terrorist methods against persons suspected of disloyalty." The disloyalty that I'm speaking of is again, disloyalty to white supremacy. So, Daryl Richards was 19-years-old. He was a child. He allegedly had a BB gun, who I am not yet convinced that SAC PD did not plant on him. Five days after, there is a white man who was literally throwing real handguns out of his car, and he was apprehended without being killed, and then was able to make a phone call to his father afterwards.[968.87][968.87](APPLAUSE). Daryl was 19-years-old. He was suffering from poor mental health. He was terrorized by SAC PD. You should have been at the vigil. You should have heard the sounds that his mother made, because those sounds will haunt me forever, and they need to haunt you forever, too. We came in here, Black Lives Matter came in here after the crisis intervention training was supposed to have happened, with proof that it did not happen the way that it should have. You, Daryl Steinberg, said, "We'll wait and see." Here is your proof. Here is your proof that it did not work, because there is another dead body, another dead body of another young man who is suffering from poor mental health. You don't care about mental health unless a person's skin is white. The officer who killed Dejean Flannot said, "This guy is a tweaker, a freak. Maybe you should mellow him out by hitting him with a baseball bat." That does not sound like concern for mental health. One of the officers who killed Joseph Mann said, "Fuck this guy. I'm gonna hit him," as he tried to run him over with his car before shredding his body with bullets. Homeless deaths are up 75% from last year. You continue to show us that you don't care about your constituents.
Thank you, Ms. Brannon. Your time is complete.
Especially if they're black, mentally ill, poor, or homeless.
Please take your seat.
You only care about money going into your pockets.
My next speaker, Ms. Brannon, your time is complete.
Ms. Brannon. Ms. Brannon.[1058.41][1058.41](APPLAUSE). Then you can leave the chambers now. You wanna...
The truth is...
I don't care what your truth is. Everybody... Ms. Brannon. Ms. Brannon, you use the F-bomb to the chair of the meeting. I need you to leave.
The truth does not exist. Shut the way, you're from your own home.
You, sir, you can leave, too. Ms. Brannon, Ms. Brannon, you need to leave the chambers right now. You need to leave the chambers. No? No, because, because you don't, you don't use, you don't use, you don't use profanity. Please leave. Please leave. Okay, let's next, you'll be next, sir. Mr. Worthy, sit down. Next. Next. Next.
Stevante Clark, Eva Nadal.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Worthy, you... Mr. Worthy, sit down. Stevante, Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, excuse me. Mr. Clark, is Stevante Clark here?
I know.
Okay, if he's not, there he is. Hi, Stevante. Welcome to you.
All right, all right.
Welcome to you.[1146.12][1146.12](APPLAUSE). Please let the speaker talk. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, I think you guys should have did what I asked you guys to do a long time ago, when I said, "Bring Tommy Norman out here, so I can help you guys with the community policing," because obviously you guys need a lot of help with that. You guys, the city feels failed again. You know, my motto, everybody love everybody. Obviously, that's not gonna happen here tonight. But I just think a lot of accountability to be held on the police department for the things that are happening in the city of Sacramento. At least an apology every now and then would be nice, you know, at least, you know. But what I would like to address right now is the meeting we have coming up, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm really serious about the resource center and the library and the recreational center. I'm very serious about that.
All right.
And, yeah, amen. Yep, amen. Uh-huh. So, so I hope we get something done when it comes to that regard.
Look forward to that one.
Also, bringing, and I believe what can help with the situation is bringing industrial and trade programs back into schools.
Yes.
You know, things like that, ending the prosecution of prostitution, fair-fetched. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of things I think can help the city. But accountability is number one on my issue.
Yeah.
And I think...
I look forward to our meetings, Stevante.
I look forward to it. We need to do more panel discussion with the sheriffs and Tanya and you. We'll all come together as the leaders come, and I think we should all just really talk and sit down. I think we all should all come together and find out solutions, because this is messed up, what's going on. God bless you all.
Thank you.
All right, lady card, brother.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Eva Nadal, then Tanya Faison.[1272.12][1272.12](APPLAUSE). Nadal, then Tanya Faison, then Stephanie Peria.
Good evening. First time having the courage to speak to you, because I don't appreciate the fact that if I don't speak in two minutes, I won't get opportunity to speak. But I want to take the time to talk about Keon. A few weeks ago, he was arrested violently. I was there, present, getting into a wheelchair that was now broken, because I was almost arrested, because I came hysterical. I'd never seen such a violent event, especially the fact that the handle of the officer who drove up violently, like, you would have thought this young man was wanted for something dangerous. I saw him do nothing, be attacked violently. I stayed in front of the county jail at 5:00. I'm 63-years-old, I'm totally disabled. I look well when I walk in here. I have seven silent illnesses, okay? I was in a wheelchair that day that's now broken, which I feel that the city should actually pay for my wheelchair. What I witnessed that day was appalling. I like Chief Hans personally, myself, I have some questions I have to ask him, not only about Keon's situation, but also the fact that we've been getting ticketed out there protesting. I received two ticket, parking ticket. I display a disabled plaque in my car, visibly. You have one officer, Steinewall, whatever his name is, who walked up the street a few days, a few weeks ago, put a place a ticket on my car while I was getting in a wheelchair with a cast on my leg with a torn ligament. Stephon Clark's grandmother was ticketed that day, plus four other people. Those tickets should be rescinded. We should not be afforded. I live off SSI. I married 42-years-old to one husband, and we are very, very active in this community. I remember so many different organizations. You've seen me, Mary, we were together just last Monday night at Fairland Park. Whenever I see you, I speak to you in respect, but you know, it's getting really hard to respect a county, where you guys are our council. I don't understand. I used to work for the city of Pittsburgh. I've never, ever seen such rudeness. We are people. We are the people. This is our house. I'd like to see more respect in here given by you guys. I'm gonna take the time to leave right now, because I do not want to be cut off. Thank you.[1380.12][1380.12](APPLAUSE).
Tanya Faison, then Stephanie Peria, then Donnell Prince. Ms. Faison?
So, on this day, this exact day, two years ago, we filled up this council chambers with people. We were fighting for Dejean and Joseph Mann. We were fighting for a commission that had more power. We didn't get any of that. We haven't gotten any justice for Dejean yet. We still haven't gotten justice for Joseph Mann. And here we are, it's two years later. We have a different mayor. March 18th, Stephon Clark was killed.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
On March 18th, Stephon Clark was killed. Just a couple months later was Brandon Smith, and now here we are, a couple months later, and now we have Daryl Richards has been killed by SAC PD. There were no beanbag guns used. There were no pepper, what do they call them, pepper ball? Pepper ball bullets, those weren't used. There was no, there was, the canine went in and just identified him. He didn't go in there and attack him. There was no non-lethal force used. There was none. And that's a policy that y'all created, to use non-lethal forms of force instead of resorting directly to killing somebody. And he ended up being a 19-year-old black boy hiding underneath someone's porch. And five days later, five days later, we saw, we witnessed, a white boy running from the police, drops two handguns out of his window, real ones. They were able to detain him, bring him to jail, and he was able to ask to call his father. Daryl had his first love, like, he didn't even get to, like, live his life. He didn't, he had his first love, he had his family. He didn't get to live his life. He was loved by so many people. And honestly, I don't, I don't understand why y'all expect to be respected in this space, because you're not... And I'm not trying to be smart or insult you. I just don't understand how you could expect to be respected in this space when you're not doing anything.
Thank you, Ms. Faison. Your time is complete.
You want to have conversations. You don't...
My next speaker is Stephanie Peria, then Donnell Price.
Hello.
Ms. Faison, your time is complete.
I don't have nothing written. I'm just saying, it needs to happen.
Ms. Faison, your time is complete.
The mayor's not here, and this is his district.
Ms. Faison, your time is complete. Please take a seat.
Tanya, thank you.
It's not happening.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Faison.
You say this, you foy, you phoney. I don't think anything you say.
Stephanie Peria.[1548.12][1548.12](APPLAUSE). Stephanie, then Donnell Price, then Ciara.
My name is Stephanie Perera. I have not been here before. This is my first time.
Excuse the city clerk for not pronouncing your name correctly. Thank you for correcting.
Don't interrupt me in my comment. I get my time, that time back. I have watched you over and over again, this is my first time here, but I've watched you disrespect black people. I've watched you disrespect, throw black people out of your council. Why do you make this face at me like you don't know what I'm talking about? You should go back and wash your own damn house in the U.S. You are so disrespectful to all these people who have lost their loved ones. You, you know what? This, this is, this is Daryl Richards. Will you show the thing? Will you show it? They put it where? I don't even know how this thing works. Oh. Oh, this, this, sorry. I don't know how this works. This is Daryl Richards. Look at how young he looks. This is ridiculous. He doesn't look a day over 14. He was a young kid, and he was scared, and there's no excuse for what the police, yes, the Gestapo, are doing in this town. You have literal Nazis running around this town saying they protect and serve people.[1634.23][1634.23](APPLAUSE). We have, we have police who call white people race traders for working with BLM. You know, we... And, and another death. I am tired, I mean, we're all tired of this. There's no excuse for this. The least you could possibly do is fire these officers. That is the one thing you can do, and if the city manager doesn't do it, you can fire them.[1658.73][1658.73](APPLAUSE). But you need to do something. There's no excuse.[1663.12][1663.12](APPLAUSE). I don't know what else to say. I, this shouldn't keep happening. And the fact that you can sit up there and look at me like you feel nothing and like you're bored.[1674.66][1674.66](APPLAUSE). There's something, don't shake your head. Have you shed a single tear for him? Have you heard his mother's wails? Have you seen his siblings?
Devil.
Y'all need to do something. There's no excuse for your shit. Fuck you.[1694.91][1694.91](APPLAUSE).
You know what? No, no, no.[1702.33][1702.33](APPLAUSE). You must leave, you must leave the chamber, ma'am. And you're out, too. Out. You, out. I want that gentleman, and I want her out, right now. Right now. No, no. There's gotta be decorum here. I'm sorry. Listening respectfully, but you can't, you can't use profanity directed at any of us here. No, you can't. No, you can't. No, you can't. No, you can't. Next. 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 Next.
Next speaker is Donnell Prince.